I want to thank everybody for coming out early this evening, get out of the heat. We'll start this off. I will now open the SK City Council Workshop tiered water rate presentation. Steve Donovan, good to see you again.
Testing, there we go. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Back to you tonight to talk about what we call conservation based water pricing or conservation water rates. And this is a very common method that's used throughout the industry. You might have heard it before tiered rates or block rates. We've got a presentation for you tonight. Hopefully you've got those in either on your PCs or on paper because it's going to be kind of a presentation by the Geek Squad tonight. We're going to go through a whole lot of techie talk. So Council McElroy, you're just going to be like a clam at high tide. You're going to be happy for this. So talk about what we're going to talk about the numbers, the observed water consumption for August of 2023. Think about that, put that on your on your plate. Now we're going to focus on August of 2023. And we're going to do some statistical gymnastics here. We're going to do something called a frequency distribution. And we're going to talk about means and standard deviations. And we're going to talk about a statistically valid way for categorizing how your customers use water at the hottest time of the year, for lack of a better term. Come up with a proposed schedule of blocks and then talk about pricing. And by the way, there is no right answer on pricing. I can give you a statistically valid breakdown of where the block should be. How you set the blocks for pricing, or if you choose to, is completely at your discretion. And we've got some examples from around Clackamas County and they're all over the place. So just just keep that in mind, too. And then what we'll do is we'll do a sample bills of with and without conservation pricing. Because I think that's something that's interesting for everybody. So if we can go to the next slide, you see this wheel here, the circle. I want to go over this starting at 12 o'clock and we'll go clockwise. In August of 2023, there were 1,905 three quarter inch meter accounts. I want to keep that, we focused on that because believe it or not, the peak that's caused in the summertime that causes all your heartburn is not caused by industrial, it's not caused by institutional, it's caused by the residential and it's all outdoor watering. You all know that. It's all irrigation. It's water sold in the peak month. The good news, this is actual red data. We're not doing any estimating because you read the meters monthly. So we got valid data there. The average consumption in August of 2023 for those 1,905 meters was 10.83 K gals or 10,000 gallons, 10,083 gallons, 830. The standard deviation does, and what a standard deviation is, is real simple. You look at the average for the sample and then we look at the variation for every other sample in that or every other observation in that sample. And we take the average of the variance. That's called the standard deviation. And it's a very important tool that we use in in math and in engineering to measure central tendency. And that's what we're looking for here. We're looking for measures of central tendency. And this death, this standard deviation of 11.48 K gals is high. So that tells us that there's a lot of variation of how people consume water in August. And that's something that we want to keep an eye on, too. Mel, we were talking about this before, even in August, the most common amount of water consumed by each of those three quarter inch meters was still 6,000 gallons. So you've got a lot of folks in town here that because they're price conscious, they don't use a lot of water, even in the hottest time of the year. So we'll go to the next slide and this is the one, this is the the real payback slide here. You'll see the the green chart there, the curve, that is the frequency distribution. And really what it is, is we took each of those observed meters and we add them up. How many used one? How many use two? How many use 10? How many use 15? As you can see, in the first block going from zero to 12 or one standard deviation, there were 1,388 accounts or 70% of all accounts were within one standard deviation. And we would suggest that that is your base block and those those people should not have any premium charged in terms of a conservation pricing because they're doing a good job of conserving. They're within a standard deviation or what we would expect to see, a reasonable level of consumption against the mean. And as you can see, the highest one there you see is still like 140 accounts out of the 1,900 were at six units. And that's just about what your average is throughout the year. Your your year round average, including winter, well, the winter average is about four, your rear round average is about six, taking into account irrigation. Now, the second block would be within two standard deviations of the mean was 424 accounts or 22% were within the two standard deviations. And then over three and going into four and some going even further was only 8%. So what we're talking about here is a very small number of accounts that use a whole lot of water at the worst time of the year for us to deliver water. We want to help these people find ways to conserve, to help us manage that peak. And we've talked about this peak before. And if we manage the peak better, we can also avoid future elements of capital that we'd have to apply to to serve the peak. So if we can shave the peak, we can build less storage, we can build less trains in the water treatment plant because we're managing that how to stay most demand of the year. So here's the next one. Now we're going to talk about where the policy comes into effect. So based on this analysis, the statistical analysis, the base block would be 70% of the accounts and they would be see no change to their price. There so there would be at $3.90 on the volume charge plus the base charges. Elena, what's your base charge now? Do you remember? I haven't I haven't got it in front of me. I think it's like $24, $25. I'm not sure. And then the next one, the the first conservation block that would go from 13 units to 24 units. That's 22% of the accounts under this strategy with a 10% price premium over the base block. They would pay $4.29 for every unit that's within that 13 to 24. So if a customer in that group is at 20, the first 12 would be priced at 390. Then the next eight would be charged at 429, $4.29. So that's how this tiering goes.
It's $21 a month.
21. And then the second block was 25% price premium over the base would be $4.88 and that would be 143 accounts. Remember, these are all just the three quarter inch now. We'll talk about the larger meters in a second. Now, the next question you're going to ask is where on earth did you come up with 10% and where did you get 25%? I pulled it out of the air. What we're going to see here is other communities, they're actually quite a bit more stringent. Let me pull up the the comps here. Uh, no, I didn't include it because it's such a busy slide. But for instance, Wilsonville, they have three blocks like we've talked here, the base block, the first block is priced at the base block. Anything over seven units, which is there, they're in hundred cubic feet. So it's a little more than yours is a 45% premium. Woodburn, they've got three blocks, their first block is priced at 29% above the base. Their second block, you know, that 8% that's way out on the end of the curve, 76%. Canby, 25% on their first block, 75% on their second. So it's anything out there. What we don't want to do is we don't want this to be a revenue generator. We want to send a price signal to customers so that they'll consume less. We 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 really, really want to manage the peak is what we want to do. We don't really want to have this as a revenue generator. So and I know that you're all concerned about that. Go ahead.
So we we don't want this as a revenue generator, but reading, reading like what Hermiston said is that they're they enacted something like this and then their revenue went down. So we with, we want to see some balance, right?
And that's why I put a very modest price structure in the 10% and the 25%. Because I don't want to put in here, you know, the just a punishing message. Whereas we're really trying to get those that 8%, those those 22 accounts are, pardon me, the 143 accounts, those are the guys we really want to just use water wisely, better. Help us manage the peak. That's really what we're driving at is to get that 8% to change. And some of them on these three quarter inch meters, I think the mayor, we were talking about this before we started. Some of these, most of these big guys, they're homeowners associations that have master meters for irrigation. And that could be a challenge because some of these folks maybe even in their CCNRs, I don't know, might be required to have green lawns. I I'm not sure. Yes. Yeah. So that's going to call for a whole lot of behavioral change. But that I think everybody understands that wasting water is not the same as as using water wisely. We all get that. And like I was telling the mayor, watering the sidewalk in the street at 2:00 in the afternoon in the hottest day of the year is is not a good use of water. You know, maybe you you tone down your your spray irrigation, you turn it into drip irrigation, that sort of thing. And then let's go to the last slide here. Elena, thank you. This is the price comparison. The blue line is the current rates with with no inverted block pricing or or tiered pricing. And then the orange line is with that 10% in the first block and 25% in the second. So those people that are out there on the far right end using the most water, they would see a, you know, a $30 a month increase at the at the end there. But some would be even more because we've got several accounts that are well beyond 50. We've got some that are using 138,000 gallons a month. Just to put that into comparison, an Olympic swimming pool, 50 meters by 25 meters by two meters deep, that's 660,000 gallons of water. Some of these people are using a third of an Olympic swimming pool per month. So that just puts it into comparison that do you really need to use that much water? And and this is all irrigation. It has nothing to do with indoor water use. It's all irrigation.
Or do any of the other cities that you looked at have a more parabolic line that's not so linear? Like a more aggressive progression?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. And what you'd see, like I was just talking about with Canby and Carlton, Carlton's another one, they they go parabolic right off the block. They because they've got a water supply problem, they're all groundwater and they've they've got a water supply problem. They anything over their, they get, they allow four units in their base charge. Anything over the base charge is 45% more for you for cost in the base. Hubbard, another one, parabolic, they've got a groundwater source and they they're they're limited in the summer, too. So the this, some of these cities have done this out of necessity. One that I think of that probably you could equate to is Aurora. And maybe you've even talked to some of the folks. Aurora is, they've got a tiger by the tail, they've got a lot of growth coming their way. They don't have the infrastructure, they don't have the wastewater treatment and they don't have the water treatment. So they've they've inserted, they've inserted block pricing and they still have curtailments in the summertime. They've had curtailments the last couple of years and that's the last thing you want to do is have curtailments.
So one of, one of the theories that cities will use is that particularly when there are a few just massive users is that by having a broader deviation for that category, and I've seen cities with the fourth category for the the quote unquote water hogs, that allows them to keep the rates for the 70% that are, you know, more responsibly using water down. So that the idea is that with the, and I'm not suggesting a fourth category would be a good idea here. But that these people are consuming a high amount of water in our if we have to get additional water rights or cities where we have to, like Gerhardt has to buy water from Warrenton on peak days because we don't have enough of our own. So those, those users are impacting the amount that the city pays and that all users will pay so that they, those cities choose to have them pay a far higher rate. And Steve gave you examples of like a 75% increase, stuff like that. So this is actually a very, in the grand scheme of things, this is a very modest. These are very modest blocks as compared to what a lot of jurisdictions will use.
My my thinking behind it was just that I like for block one, if you use 24 gallons, the difference in your bill is going to be 11 times 39, like $4.50.
It's not going to be much.
I don't think that's going to discourage people from using water. And my thought process was why not have it be more aggressive towards the high end?
Yeah.
Move from 12 to say 15 so we can reduce the number of people impacted by the increases and then make it more severe for the people that are using a third of an Olympic swimming pool every year.
Yeah.
And hit them at 100% of the of the rate. And then they'll make a choice of whether it's worth it for them. Then then they're going to be put to a decision. They're going to notice they're built doubles on their 138,000 gallons a month of water usage. And we'll we'll see the the water usage go down, whereas I don't think it's going to have the desired effect that a $4 increase in a water bill for the people in that first
Right, right.
conservation block was.
You're you're my straight man. Two weeks ago, we were in Independence doing the same thing. We proposed the same 10%, 25% as a baby step. And they're a very conservative community and they came back and agreed that they're going to do 25% in the first block and 75% in the second. I mean, you're exactly what you were saying is they they saw the numbers. They said, why are these people using a half an Olympic swimming pool? We need to send them a message for 120 accounts that are really driving the bus here that we really want to get a message out to.
So if if we move the first block to 15 or 16 and the next block to 27 or 28, then I think that, and then if you upped the percentages, particularly for block number three, you'd be helping out more families in block number one because that's, you know, there are decent amounts that are at that.
Well, in the base blocks, you've got 70% of the accounts or, you know, 1,300 accounts, they would see no change at all, period. There would be no, no pricing mechanism in there at all for for conservation because they're already doing a good job. It's the block one and the block two. And Mike, you're you're nailed it. You're right on point.
Personally, I'd like to see it closer to 80% of the counts not impacted by any increase and then attack the the top 20% more aggressively with the percentages to try to discourage the water consumption. And then if if that didn't work, come back and take a look at the percentages later is is my opinion on it, but I'm open to other ideas.
No, that's good. Well, there we're not, no action tonight. And I mean, you you brought a great point. I mean, people are just rate shock sick right now of everything. And it's, we can't look at this world in a vacuum because PGE is coming back for another 18% over the 25% they had just this spring, Northwest Natural and everybody, cable, everything is is going up. So we have to take that into account. But what we're trying to do here is we don't, this isn't a revenue generator. In concert with a education program that Elena has pointed out in her conservation, water conservation and management program. Education is is as critical as the price signal that we can give to them. And if we can get the message out and say, you know, how to conserve and you've even got mechanisms to help them. You can do water audits here, don't you? Yeah. So I mean, that's, that's the the hand in glove approach to this is this is not a revenue generator, this is a managing a scarce resource issue.
I I think what Counselor McElroy is saying is that if you get 80% into the first tier, then you're really capturing a substantial, and then we're sending the message. And then if you have a more severe next block and then a very severe last block, we're not. I don't think the city would be generating any more money. They would simply be protecting wider percentage of their population. That's what I was hearing. But it seems like that could be engineered so that we make sure we're not making money and that it's revenue neutral while pursuing all the rest of the ideas.
The only thing I'm concerned about is those pesky lawyers, you know.
Right.
Is this, is the method that we've come up with, is it arbitrary and capricious? Or is it fact based and statistically valid?
And actually, Steve and I have had this conversation in multiple jurisdictions, though my argument of impacting as few people as possible and and making sure that other, that the heaviest users are the ones that are paying.
Right.
Not the people that are on fixed incomes, not the people that are trying to be responsible. And you know, when, when you are within, like let's, and I'm just throwing out numbers here. If if there are cities at 85%, which there are, and we're at a 50, I'm not worried about us getting sued because like ours is if we were at like some crazy amount and it was, and it wasn't because of like limited groundwater or like stuff where we were having to ship in water on trucks or something like they do in Arizona, right? I might be concerned, but if what we're trying to do is protect a higher number of, a higher percentage of users and we're lower than adjacent jurisdictions, I'm not worried about legal risk. Because if I get a call from a lawyer, what I'm saying is like, well, we're at 50 and Canby's at 85. And you know, Aurora is at whatever Aurora is at and Carlton, all the Yamhill County ones are really are much higher than than the the numbers that we're contemplating. So it's just like, it it's like any ordinance, if we're 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 within the mainstream, like that doesn't necessarily prevent a lawsuit. But then if it goes before a jury and it's like there are 80 jurisdictions in Oregon that are tiered that have higher differences than we do. Ours is actually modest. That makes it very difficult for someone to develop a winning argument. And so it's just a matter of looking at us and our neighbors.
In, go ahead.
Malala and Sandy, are they on this water tiered?
We did Malala, yeah. We did Malala in 2021. And I mean, it was, it was like the same conversation I'm hearing. It's just the the y'all, you get the numbers like that.
Do you remember the rate saver app, Richard?
Let's see here. I've got, let's take a look.
While you're looking that up, too, I think this might be especially the slide that shows who's using what, how much water. Because sometimes it's hard to know, do I use a lot of water? I don't know. It's kind of all relative. I don't feel like I do. But do I get my water bill? And it says how many thousand gallons? Is that a lot? I don't know. And so this would really say, okay, this, people could see this is like the averages of what people are using. I think it would give them maybe a goal to aim for, hey, we're, we're using a little too much. Let's try to bring it down. Let's do a landscape audit. And I have a bunch of actual, I have some information over here people can pick up about like landscape audits and rebates for, to stop leaking fixtures in their homes and stuff. But this would hopefully give them, say, hey, I'm in a good spot. I do, I use a good amount of water or I need to bring it back in a little bit. And because sometimes it's just, I think it's hard for people to know how much they're actually using. Is that a lot? What's, is that relative? So.
Yes, got it right here. What they did choose to do is they did a base block, which was from zero to five. And these are, these are cubic feet now. So this would have been a very short block. And they said anything over 7,000 gallons would be the highest block. So they decided to keep real small blocks, but they did a 10% premium and a 25% premium between those two blocks. Whereas Council McElroy, if you want to do 80%, remember my first block was from zero to 12. If we went from zero to 15, based on the August 2023, you'd capture 80%. So you could go zero to 15 in your first block, 15 to 30 for your second and anything over 30 for your third. And that would capture your decision rule of 80% of people are not impacted at all. And then anything over that 30 is you're going to, you're going to clobber them. And 30 is a lot. I mean, 30 is still about five, 6%, 5% of an Olympic swimming pool. 50 units, which we had 22 accounts over 50 units would be an 8% of an Olympic swimming pool. And well, like I said, we had one 138,000 gallons, you know, that's, that's a third of a swimming pool. So if we can get the message to those 22 accounts that are way out there on the edge, I think you'd consider this a victory. And without impacting 80% of all of your customers. But I'm not selling, I'm just brokering, brokering data here. I mean, this is a, this is a difficult decision, especially with the fact that your, your sewer rates are going to be going up very, very fast.
And that's the argument I think we are all really sitting on right now with all the rates going up like they are, it's really hard.
Right.
A small, I hear, at any point in this, this situation we're in right now is a scary thought to the people. And I think that's what we're getting flashbacks on, not so much that it makes sense what you're talking about here.
Right, right.
I get that. But it's just hard for me to put that across to people and say, hey, we're going to raise this based on this. Because all they're going to see is that number. They're not going to see the logic, the crunching, the who's using more water, any of that. They're just going to see that this person's going to pay more for water. So I'm trying to figure out how we get around that.
Right, that's right, right, right.
I was just going to say, I'm in support of of the plan doing the 80%. Seeing if we could, we could raise the amount that people of the of the price increase at the higher levels. I I looked at my own for my, the worst month I had was August. And I was prior to June, July, I was in the 8,000s. Come August, our HOA was really coming down on me that month. And I was watering day and night and I looked at mine, it was just 12.9 is where I came in in August.
Far from the mean.
Well, no, and then I did the calculation, it would have been just a couple bucks.
Just a couple bucks.
And I'm already paying maybe $30 or $40 extra because of all the watering I did. I wouldn't even have noticed a $2 fee to be put on there, something to kind of curtail the, the, the use. So yeah, I I like the idea of of, you know, protecting that base more and having higher increases.
Being a staffer, we're going to have to have some adult supervision here. What what would you like us to bring back to you to to think about in terms of a legislative act for the council?
I agree. I agree with what Council McElroy suggested. You know, that those tiers, the 80%, you know, just like what Paul.
So the first, so the, you know, the first 80, the first tier is is no, no fee. That second tier, well, I've got it at 10%. What were you thinking about for that second tier? 25%, 15%? What 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 were your, what were you thinking? And there's no wrong answer here, by the way.
I was, I was even thinking about keeping that pretty mild, like increasing that to 15. But the third tier where we're having the worst issues, bumping that up to like 70%. And sending out notices to all the accounts that are you having that water usage prior to the increase and let them know that this is designed specifically to curtail their
Absolutely.
Use and they're going to have an opportunity to address it before they get their bill. I don't want people to get surprised by the bill either.
Typically, what we do is we implement the tiered rate structure on January 1st because it impacts nobody. But we get, and this is where Elena and and Mel, your your education program has to get out and say, look, next summer, this is going to, this is going to impact you. Here are the things you can do to mitigate that. And then also identifying and getting one-on-one contact with those 122 customers that are that are above 50 and getting out a a letter or a face-to-face conversation with them saying your, your water is consumption is is outside of our norm here. We're trying to manage our resources better. Can we help you manage your water better? Not, we're going to come out and bust, you know, punch you in the mouth if you use water. We're going to, we're going to try to find ways to help you reduce your water bill, for lack of a better term.
How difficult, Melanie, would it be to get a list of the accounts from this year? If we were to bring that in on January 1st for the the list of accounts for the 20% of users that are going to be impacted by it and get letters out directly to them?
Yeah, we could absolutely start doing that.
We've got them. It's, I mean, we've got them right here. I mean, we know who they are.
And we could put something on the website that says, this is the tiered rates that we're considering, conservation rates we're considering. Would it affect you? And and show them how to look at their water bill. Look at what, you know, how much they're, figure out how much they're using and see if it would, which block they would fit into and.
70% just seems really extreme. I mean, are we, is that our goal is to shock them into water conserve, conservation?
I think that was the idea behind that.
That was my idea, but I'm open to.
That was my idea, but I'm open to other ideas about it. I just said, if the idea is to curtail water usage and you want it to want them to stop using so much water, that was my thinking behind it, but I'm, I'm open to whatever.
That's the old Will Rogers strategy. Yeah. Will Rogers said, the best way to get someone's attention is to either hit them in the head with a two-by-four or send them a bill.
Just, yeah, seventy, seventy percent.
That seemed a little I, I was looking for in the fifty range, you know? Something to get their attention, but not to, to whack them over the head with it. I, I don't want this to become a tool.
Right.
I want it to be accepted by all. I said, this makes sense. I like what you're doing here. I can, I can follow this, okay? Instead of, I'm gonna, I'm gonna nail you, uh, on this one and, and they look at it like I'm using this, this situation to
To punish them.
Yeah, and I don't want that to be the case here.
Right.
Rather be a learning.
This isn't, yeah, this is not meant to be a punishment or a money grab. But, uh, but I definitely appreciate your, where you're, where you're coming from.
Charity, yeah.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I think fifty percent would be a substantial enough that rate increase that, that they would see that on the bill and, and it'd kind of wake them up a little bit.
Any other thoughts, Jerry? Any thoughts on, on a number? I mean, this is pie in the sky now.
My, my, my brain was, was kind of hovering at the fifty percent mark too for that third block. Um, and I like the fifteen percent of the first, on the first block. But I don't know, kind of teetering on the, you know, the shock for the first year, you know? But I, I, I mean, fifty percent is, like I said, that's where my brain kind of went.
And just to say, we're not, I mean, at a later date, if this isn't working at the fifty percent mark, is there anything that says we can't go back?
I gotta share a story with you. We did the, all of the water rates for Mercer Island, Washington, and that's a hyper wealthy community in Lake Washington that buys all of its water from the city of Seattle. And huge lots, they've got yachts and everything. And we put in the first year on this because they have to pay a real premium. It's kind of strange. They're in the middle of Lake Washington and they're paying a premium for their water. Uh, but we, first year, we did a, a, a fifty percent in that, that last tier of that block. And we came back the next year and was no change in behavior. So the council raised it a hundred, went to a hundred percent of the base block. We came back the next year, was no change in behavior. These people were so rich and that their water bill just never even crossed their minds. So their, their behavior was not gonna change no matter what price signal we gave them. It's called price elasticity of demand. You know, no matter how much you raise the price, you're not gonna change the demand.
I think California saw this early on.
Yeah.
In the same sense.
In the same sense.
Where they were filling their pools.
So, how, how, how will this affect our school district?
Uh, let's talk about that for a second because
I mean, with, with, with what we just went through with the school bond failing.
That's a really good piece. And I want to get back to Councillor Metcalf when we're done here on this. But here, let's go to, Elena, can you go to the? This is, this is good staff work by your guys here because they anticipated, they said, well, you know, we were all just studying these three-quarter inch residential meters. What about the big meters? And you'll see here, this chart is for the big meters, one and a half and two-inch meters. And what they are is for the top twenty-five water consumers in the summer of, of, of August of twenty twenty-three. And then their corresponding consumption for January of twenty twenty-three, for each of these twenty-five accounts. So you see what I'm, that, the orange line is the summer consumption, the August consumption. And then the blue line is the corresponding January. And what this chart is telling us is that by and large, even with the larger meters and the institutional accounts, they use more water in the summer than they do in the winter, okay? But you look at that first dot, the customer number one, call it, and he's got a six, one point six million gallons of water was used in August. That's two point four five Olympic swimming pools. That was the school district's irrigation meters.
School?
The high school. So, and then look at the corresponding, how much water the, the high school used in January. It's like fifteen, fifteen thousand gallons for the entire school, so. They are big consumers. Now, what some communities do is they don't apply conservation pricing to their institutional and, and large meter customers. They just make a, a policy decision not to do that. And you, your billing system can cope with that. You can do that. But as you can see here, that is a huge amount of water that they're irrigating in August with no kids in school.
Yeah, but they have, they, they have sports fields, you know, that, that are, have to be maintained.
Right.
So.
And they're going back to school in August now, so they're, they'll be using the field soon. Can you, can you leave out the school specifically without doing a broad swath of the industrial users? You could, you could make an exception for, um, yeah, I mean, the answer is yes, we could, but we'd have to figure out, we'd have to look at the, you, uh, users and figure out a, um, clear and objective means to do it.
You've, you've got to, you've got to be careful in this arbitrary and capricious thing. Because if, if we start treating, you know, class A citizens against class B citizens, you're, you're looking for, for trouble.
My thought is that we're paying the bill anyways.
You're paying the bill anyway.
Discharging the people of the community within the school district, the bill, basically.
Right, but the answer to your question, yeah, it, it, uh, the school district spends a lot on water now.
Yeah.
Charity, you have something?
Yeah, um, this is probably more for, for staff. Do we have any um, areas of land and within the city limits that are more agricultural that will need water? I don't think we do, but I just, I'm just, you know, I was just thinking about if anybody, you know, blueberry growers or anything like that.
A lot of those aren't wells, or they had, so they have groundwater, yeah.
Yeah, I just didn't want them to be impacted. I didn't think that we did, but.
Also consider like the, the Whispering Pines or Timber Grove if they're, um, I don't know how they, they're on a large meter, but they're delivering water to all of those apartments.
Right, 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 right. And as you can see, we've even got, if you look at this chart, there's kind of a head scratcher. Why is it that two of these points, what I call customer number six and customer number nine, used more water in the wintertime than they used in the summer, you know? We're trying to figure that one out ourselves. And customer number six is the wastewater treatment plant. Yeah, so we're, we're trying to figure that out too. So what you take away from this, this chart is that even with your large meters, your institutional customers, they do use more water, generally speaking, in the summertime than they do in the winter. Now, Councillor Metcalf, what are you thinking back to our tier's thoughts? Does it resonate with you? Did you have any ideas on pricing?
No.
It's a tough question.
I think that if the objective here is conservation, then I'm with Councilman McCo- McElroy. I'm, I'm in, if the objective is really conservation, then I think you go extreme on the high end, minus the school. And I think it's, it'd be silly to slap the school district for, I mean, they got football and fall ball for the youth and stuff like that that's going on. So that's why they start watering and those fields are are barely green as it is. I mean, we already have space issues, so it's not like we could ask them to go participate somewhere else or act, take practice somewhere else and, and do that. So, I mean, we're shooting ourselves in the foot messing with the school district on that, I, my personal opinion, but if we're gonna tell people what they can and can't do with water, then I think if that's where we're gonna go, then go all the way. Like, I'm with you, open it up to the eighty percent, whatever, so that the mass majority of people are not affected. But then outside of that, if, if you're somebody that's just watering your rose garden excessively, then you're gonna pay to water your rose garden. But it's not hurting a family of five or the family of four or whatever that's got kids that want to fill their twenty-five gallon blow-up inflatable swimming pool or something twice a week to change the water so it's not boiling hot or something. I mean, if we're gonna go the route, I'm with you on. Make it, make it to where it does what the determinant is, like.
And that's so that the, we got sort of like bookends here, uh, seventy-five percent was the severe end. And then fifty percent was kind of what I was hearing is more of a, 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 a softer touch. So that's kind of the bookends.
Because you can always go up.
You can always go up, right.
So to start off with something to see if it even phases these people.
Right.
Because we are not rich around here, okay? People might think we are, but we are not. So the idea that you want to go eighty percent and slam it down like that
Yeah.
just seems a little ridiculous at this point. I think fifty to start off with, just to get their attention. And believe me, if they're working on a budget like most of us are, even the ones they think are wealthier, um, are working on a budget, because we are not that area yet. Um, we'll feel it and they will adjust accordingly.
Councillor Prokop?
I, I'm in agreement with everybody. Um, I do like the fifty percent approach. I think it's less jarring and we'll get, uh, some real tangible results.
Behavioral change is what we're asking for here. And, and we're giving people the choice. They say, you can avoid this fee by just using less water. And this irrigation water is discretionary. It's like, I, I know you were thinking, well, then we can't take a shower, we can't wash our dishes. That's irrelevant. Indoor water usage is, is minuscule compared to what we're doing here. Irrigation. Now the next thing, the next layer then is, well, I love my green lawn, that's, that makes me happy. That's the happiest thing. So you're taking away my happiness. Well, yeah, that's, it's hard to, hard to cook, to go back on that one. But can you possibly use water more wisely and still have a green lawn? That's where the education component comes in. And it's such an important component to this, rather than the, the, the heavy hammer of pricing. We want to have an education component in here too. Mr. Strobel?
I'm in consensus as well too.
And what's, what's your price points?
Uh, same, same as what we heard.
Fifteen percent and fifty percent. We're kind of heading toward the consensus here. It's fifteen in the first fifty percent. We're gonna expand the block from zero to twelve to get seventy percent. We're gonna expand the block from zero to fifteen to get eighty percent. So that's another key component here. Mayor, thoughts?
I, I think we came to it. I mean, it seems like we've all got a general idea how it's gonna work. Um, like I said, if it doesn't even get attention, and we're not seeing a reduction.
Well, then you come back.
Always go up.
Yeah.
You know, and, and hit them at this, you know, if it's not making any difference. But I want to try to make this a learning experience. I want them to understand that we're trying to do this for everyone and, and try to be on a more common ground rather than hitting with the heavy first off.
I hear you.
I'm just saying, we can go there if we have to, but. And then the whole idea with the school, I, I'm in the same boat. Those sports fields have to be green. There's just no way you can tell people, go practice somewhere else. And I've seen those front, they don't water in the front. Those lawns die off hard. So they're doing their part as far as that I can see. You know, the sports fields I can understand, so I can't really say that we should include them in that. I think we should make some adjustments for those kind of things. But, and I think the people would understand too, because it is the kids we're talking about here. Um, I think that always gains ground more than anything else. So I'm, I'm in consensus with the whole thing we've been talking about, moving the blocks, going with the fifty, fifteen.
President Hughes?
Um, pretty much the same. I'd like to keep it, you know, protect the eighty percent of the population. That first tier being fifteen percent, starting with a softer approach, fifty percent. Hopefully that will get people's attention. Um, I would like to see the schools, you know, have some sort of exemption from that if, if we're, we're going over. And my sons have played football in those fields. And, uh, they're pretty, they're pretty dry in the summer. They're pretty rough as it is. So I never see overwatering, but I mean, it's hard, it's hard in the summertime, but I'd like to see the school uh, get a little bit of break on that.
Next question for the council then.
One more before we go on. I'd like to, uh, kind of view the, the park system in our city. We've talked about the school district, but we haven't talked about the parks. Now, we have a few parks here, they're small, some of them. But I know we do water and to keep those green and to keep them a park. I can't see shutting the water down usage in our Wade Creek Park or any of those other ones. And I know we use a lot of water. I'm not sure where we're at.
One of the largest users was the park.
Okay, so we have to figure this out in a way that's beneficial on this aspect too, because people use that as gathering place for, you know, everybody.
So that, that's, you really hit upon what could be a clear and objective standard. So if it's recreational facilities that are open to the public, which would include the school district and parks, then they could be exempted from the tiered system because there's a public interest in main, and there's a public interest in not having a field that's bone dry. And so when people are getting tackled, you know?
I was gonna comment on that. It's a lot more safety than beauty is why they.
Yeah. So that's, that's a clear and objective criteria that we could put in, and we just have to go with the large meters user by user and see who, um, see who would be exempted from the, I'll call it bracket ride, um, approach.
You think that's agreeable there, bud?
Mayor, Mr. President, so what would you like staff to bring back to you? And what would, what form would you like to see it in? And when would you like to see it?
Well, I think, uh, you've got it out there now. Everybody's looking at it, everybody's listening to it. So I think the sooner the better. And to the scale that we just talked about, including the school and the parks to be included in that as public areas. You know, that being a part of that whole thing. Let's research that, make sure we dial it in before we ever come back with this, because I want to make sure we've got it.
You're gonna need a report from me for facts and findings, so I'll, I'll, I'll get a report to you that will be nine, mind-numbingly stupid.
So maybe first meeting of July, that'd be a month out. Is that too far? We could work on public information and getting word out.
Keeping in mind that you could implement the rates, but they won't quick into effect till January of, of twenty twenty-five and really impact people's bills till next summer. And that's, that's what we want to do.
Get used to it too. So if there's a way we could get this out there, full bore, give people an opportunity to view it, understand it, like it or don't like it, come voice your opinion kind of thing. So this is not a, a shock.
Right. It will be a shock no matter what. I mean, you're, you're gonna find out that, nobody ever told me that, that, uh, who, who agreed to this, you know, sort of thing. You're, that you're gonna get that. Uh, but you're also got a great point that if next year we come back and do the same statistical analysis and we found out nobody changed. Everybody said, heck, it's just ten bucks more a month, fifteen more bucks a month, then you might want to revisit it again.
Like to be, for there to be an education campaign going on before those, right before next summer, not just one mailer going out, but everything we can do to offer the resources to help people reduce their bill to get underneath, to get into that eighty percent range. Um, and then have something, uh, I like the way that you put the picture of the Olympic pool, but something smaller, maybe fifty to a hundred gallon size that people can recognize as a point of reference and use the math there. If they're using ten times the amount that the normal user's using, just put it into something in the scale that gives.
Probably the best thing you could do is the average customer uses this, you're using fifteen, twenty times as much as the average user.
Yeah.
That, that.
And something visual for like fifty-five gallon drum, you're using four hundred of these, you know, or four hundred more than this customer, something very visual that kind of shocks them into.
So that's right up her street, right there. That, that, this is catnip for that lady.
Yeah.
And I think getting back to water providers out here again, because they're the big conserve, uh, water people. They're gonna show you everything there is, and we had them at them.
Well, they've got great resources with those folks.
Makes us a part of that campaign. I think that'll help us out immensely.
They're actually gonna be at the library on the twenty-first. I forgot to put that in my report coming up here. Um, but so they are out in the community. I met her today and got some brochures and I told her that I would see. I know your meetings are always busy, but I said I would ask if you wanted to come and, yeah, I think it would be good, yeah.
Well, what we'll do is we'll get a report written, we'll get a resolution for you to consider. Um, and then you can take it up either in your July meeting or your August meeting. There's no rush. Time is, you know, we're still, this is gonna be a, a, a phasing in thing, effective January one twenty-five to really impact next summer's consumption.
Yeah, really quickly, just out of curiosity for me here, on this block two um, of the hundred and forty-three accounts, how many of those are residential?
All of them.
All of these?
Yeah, all these are, these are all three-quarter inch meter.
Stream, okay, so that's not counting. Okay.
I can't say that because some of these were city accounts for the parks that were on, on three-quarter inch meters, but they're all, all three-quarter inch meters.
Does the school accounted in this one then, or no?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Thanks.
We appreciate you. Thank you for coming out.
We'll get back to you and follow through on this.
Thank you, Steve.
During that workshop, and what do we got here?
We're running a little late.